Good afternoon and welcome to the September 5th Clearwater City Council Work Session. We're going to start today's meeting with a couple of presentations and we're going to have a service award first. Twenty-five-year employee, if we could have Paula Chaplinski from the library.
On this special occasion, we celebrate and honor your career of twenty-five years with the City of Clearwater. Your dedication, resilience, and unwavering commitment have contributed to the growth and success of our organization. You began your career working for the library in nineteen ninety-eight as a library assistant, where you played a crucial role in fostering a love for knowledge and learning within our community. Your passion for connecting people with resources has been evident from the start. Your journey continued as you transferred to the city manager's office, where your organizational skills and attention to detail became an invaluable asset. Your transition to the planning department showcased your adaptability and willingness to embrace new challenges. As you moved to the Parks and Rec Department, your enthusiasm and teamwork as part of the special events team showed brightly. Your time in code enforcement highlighted your dedication to assisting with regulations and maintaining the integrity of our community. In two thousand and four, you returned to your roots in the library. This time, as a senior staff assistant. Your role assisting with the library administration and system-wide staff with various tasks, especially processing payroll, helped ensure the library's internal operations ran smoothly. Today, your role as administrative assistant reflects the culmination of your diverse experiences and the wide range of your skills that you've acquired throughout your career and our organization. Your ability to manage tasks with efficiency and professionalism is a testament to your dedication. Your journey has been one of growth, learning, and adaptability. Your willingness to embrace new challenges, your ability to excel in various roles, and your steadfast commitment to our organization is appreciated. Thank you, Paula, for your twenty-five years of superior public service. You have helped Clearwater thrive from data beach.
Congratulations again to Paula. Twenty-five years, great job. Okay, if we can now have the Transit Riders Advisory Committee, please come forward. We have Theodore Melis, Robert Fahey, Sidney Ferguson, Eric Go-Ringer, Christian Greve, Louis Marquez, and Charles Sheldon.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having us in. I'm Bob Lasher, External Affairs Officer of the Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority. We have a wonderful group of riders who meets every month, our Transit Rider Advisory Committee. And we basically run everything we do through them, all of our projects and plans, because as regular riders, they get to help us find the errors in how to make things better. And one of the things they also do is they like to issue an award for things that are well-done in the community. And as far as moving that forward, I would just simply, it is my honor to introduce the current chair of our track committee, Mr. Mark O'Hara. Tell you a little more about the award.
All right, thank you. It's very nice to meet all of you. My name is Mark O'Hara. I am the current chairman of the Transit Riders Advisory Committee for PSTA. As Bob already said, all planning that goes on at PSTA passes through our body first before it goes to the board. I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Al Burton before, as when he was on our board, or he's still on the board. I keep forgetting that you're still on the board. And thank you for your wonderful support. While we were on the board, the past chair, who is actually here with us today, Gloria, who I learned so much from, created something called the Track Star Award. And this is where we recognize cities, developers in Pinellas County, who incorporate transit into their development. As my predecessor has taught me, once we get off the bus, we are pedestrians, and we need somewhere safe to get off and get into a shopping plaza, or get into wherever we're about to go. So we are here to acknowledge the City of Clearwater for such a project and to share the details. Clearwater's own, Gloria Leepack-Cooregan.
Hi, thank you. Hi, I've met several of you. I know several of you, thank you. As Mark was saying, the Transit Riders Advisory Committee's Star Award, Safe Transit Access Recognition, was created really because we wanted to make sure that everyone understood how important it is, when you're not driving a car, how you get around within Clearwater. And this was a, we have given several of these awards. In fact, we've given some of them to Clearwater already and have several in the upper. But this one was a relatively small award, but it was very significant how it was handled. I had noticed that by Countryside Mall, there was one of the traffic lights there where you cross as a pedestrian that's right adjacent to a bus stop, that was dirt, and the dirt had sort of washed away, and so the concrete ended and there was, it just kind of dropped off. Really dangerous, especially for people like me in a wheelchair. My wheels could very easily catch the end of that, mothers with strollers and so forth. And I contacted Clearwater. I contacted First and Sea Click Fix, and they said, no, no, here's the information to Clearwater. I contacted Clearwater. I can't tell you, I think it was two, three weeks at the most later, I saw that they were out there correcting it already. And there's this wonderful now, little concrete platform, so that when I come up to that light to hit the button, I can just pull my chair in there safely out of the traffic. I don't, you know, I don't have to risk going off the edge. And so it was a little thing, you know, in the grand scheme of things, but it was a big thing for a lot of us as pedestrians. Great deal safer, and it was also just astounding how quickly and efficiently Clearwater handled it. I was like, I'm proud to be from Clearwater. So with that, I'd like to present the award to your team, to the City of Clearwater Traffic Operations Signal Team for the improvements by Countryside Mall and Mall Boulevard. To whom do I give this?
My daughter says if I don't post this on social media, it wouldn't happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations, job well done. We appreciate it very much. Okay, at this point, I'm going to call Chief Gandy forward, chief. He's going to give us a brief rundown on the unfortunate situation that happened at Countryside High School recently.
Eric Gandy, Chief of Police. So I wanted to brief you on the circumstances that occurred at Countryside High School. It's a very active investigation, so I don't want to get into a lot of the details, but I just wanted to give you a high-level overview of that situation and an update on the conditions of the two victims in this case. This occurred on the thirty-first, eleven-twenty-three. We got, one of the officers got on the radio, indicated that they had a stabbing that occurred. And shortly thereafter, they got on the radio and indicated that they had the subject at gunpoint. They took him into custody and began rendering aid to the victims, had both victims transported from the scene, and we began to clear the school to ensure that you know, no additional threats. And the challenge with these things, you get a lot of conflicting information. Fortunately, when this occurred, we had two SROs in the immediate vicinity of the occurrence. The suspect in this case is fourteen years old. It's critically important to remember, we're dealing with a fourteen-year-old with ideations and beliefs that were shocking to the investigators. Had drafted a manifesto, and his intent that day was to kill, plain and simple. So we are looking, he's bounced around the state quite a bit, other jurisdictions, out of state, so our work is not concluded yet. We have to see if there were any signs that were missed in any jurisdiction, or any circumstances that would have led law enforcement to be able to detect or interrupt this thing at any point in time. But most importantly today, and I want to talk about the victims, they are a ninth grader and an eleventh grader. The ninth grader was stabbed in the neck, and fortunately was able to be treated and released relatively quickly from the hospital. It doesn't negate the severity of the wounds he suffered, but it speaks to the fact that he was very fortunate. The second victim, the eleventh grader, is in much more serious condition, required surgery after this event, was admitted to ICU, and has a recovery out of him. It's just one of those things that you constantly hear, well, that's never going to happen here, or never going to happen at this school. And in law enforcement, sometimes we get questions about why we have cops in schools. This is why we have cops in schools. And it's very fortunate that this individual did not gain access to a firearm, because I think, you know, while we still would have interrupted this, I think the devastation could have been much higher. So I'm not going to answer any questions, other than to let you know that we are actively working with our counterparts. We are reaching out, we have to reach out to another state to see if we can find information. But as far as we know at this point, in our databases, we don't have any contact with this juvenile, nor does he have a disciplinary history in the Pinellas County School District. I've been in communication with the Office of State Schools in Tallahassee, and they're helping us to look at all school districts to see if there's any history there. So that's what we're working on at this point. We're also pursuing potential additional charges, depending on what is revealed during the course of this investigation. Effectively, the update that I can provide at this point, certainly more will come out in the future, and I think it's important to continue to learn from this. And what we do with any case of this nature is do detailed after-action reports, because while we had, and I don't want to even call it a successful outcome, we had an outcome that minimized some of the tragedy involved in this, we can still learn. We can still adjust our tactics, we can still learn from our engagement that day and do it better next time, because unfortunately, there will always be a next time. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. And thank you to the officers who responded rapidly. My understanding is they were there within thirty seconds, so they did a great job.
Yes, thanks, sir. I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Okay. What kind of update we want to have, but I thought it was important to hear exactly what's going on. On a happier note, we missed a major hurricane. We had some damage, but we had people that worked very, very hard, didn't get a lot of sleep for a couple of days. And I'm going to take a few minutes here to thank them. I've got some notes here, so I don't want to miss anybody. But first of all, I want to thank the city manager, her team, they did a tremendous job. They were available at all hours, being bugged by certain people like me, but they did a tremendous job. Solid Waste, the recycling team, the residential team, the commercial teams contributed to the storm response by adjusting scheduling and routes to ensure. Were accomplished both prior to the storm and afterwards. Our residential team provided a second pass for the evacuation area because of the higher amount of damage, and to afford evacuated residents more time to gather debris. General Services, our building and maintenance team ensured all generators were operational and fueled, all buildings were shuttered prior to the storm. Additionally, they conducted damage assessments of buildings post-storm. Fleet Maintenance Team fast-tracked several vehicles for first responders, Public Works and Public Utilities, to get them operational for recovery operations. Parks and Recs, all Parks and Recreation Teams played an active role. This includes the Parks Team, the Downtown Team, Ball Field Team, the Tradesworker Team, Recreation Center Team, Heavy Equipment Team, Special Event Team, and Recreation Programming Team. Post-storm damage assessment worked with various other teams to conduct cleanup operations, support the potential use of facilities as shelters or collection places for evacuees, and also host kid camps for children of employees conducting post-storm operations. Police Department, the patrol officers, the Criminal Investigations Division detectives, police telecommunicators, provided public safety response, aided in closing impassable roadways, and addressed post-storm issues. The Fire Department FD Teams aided in coordinating special needs evacuations prior to the storm and responded to two small fires during post-storm recovery. Planning and Development conducted post-storm damage assessments and reported observations to City EOC and County EOC. Public Works, the engineering team, the stormwater team, Streets and Sidewalks Team, Traffic Operations Team, all support the storm, supported the storm pre-event, doing preparations of tree trimming, maintenance on storm drains, and testing emergency power systems for traffic lights. Public Works Teams worked in cooperation with other city departments to conduct post-storm cleanup operations, identified stormwater systems that required attention, and addressed traffic lights that had interrupted power, been interrupted by power, excuse me, while all traffic lights in the city being restored to regular operating within twelve hours after the storm passed. That's outstanding. Engineering helped review damage on Pier Sixty that is still being evaluated. Public Utilities, all teams conducted preparations to ensure all facilities remained operational. Wastewater managed all city lift stations, which was extremely important, having only one go down while it was completely submerged by storm surge. Utilities worked with other city departments to help with recovery and restoration of flooded areas. Marine and Aviation conducted preparations for the marinas and conducted damage assessments post-storm. Staff had to address a poorly secured sail vessel that damaged the dock and ultimately sank at the downtown marina. Division Chief Javon Graham and Emergency Management Specialist Derek Smith began monitoring the storm over a week in advance of impact. The Emergency Management Team conducted, communicated regularly with the city staff, county officials, and public communications to ensure the proper messaging, preparations, and response were properly conducted and properly documented. And then Public Utilities coordinated multiple interviews and kept the media and citizens advised. I especially want to thank Javon Graham and Derek Smith. Outstanding job. To everybody, I told the city manager, I think we did a great job. We're fortunate that we didn't get the full brunt of this, but we're prepared. Hopefully, the storm season beginning, they'll continue to go up the Atlantic and fizzle out, but we're ready in case they come. And everyone did a great job. Thank you very much again. Congratulations. Okay, let's move on with our meeting. Office of Management and Budget, excuse me, three-point-one.
Approve the recommended penny for Pinellas project list as revised for fiscal years two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-nine, two thousand thirty.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Kayleen Castle, Budget Director. Wednesday is the annual public hearing to approve the penny for Pinellas project list for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four through fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty. City ordinance requires us to hold a public hearing prior to the annual adoption of the capital improvement budget to discuss the use of penny for Pinellas tax, and also at any time in which there's a proposed change in the penny for Pinellas project list over five hundred thousand dollars. Changes to penny for Pinellas projects for the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four capital improvement budget and six-year plan include an increase to the fire engine's ladder truck replacement project. The funding for this project is being increased by a total of one million eight hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. This represents cost increases estimated at a total of four hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for fire engines planned for purchase in fiscal years twenty-seven, twenty-eight through twenty-nine, thirty. And that also includes the addition of a ladder truck budgeted at an estimated cost of one million four hundred thousand planned for replacement in twenty-nine, thirty. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the penny list.
Any questions or comments on the penny list? Anyone? Yes?
Hi, Kayleen. I had a question on the second document that's linked here. There's, you have three different colors, gray, blue, beige, and green. Is there a legend that indicates what those different colors?
Yeah, at the bottom. So the blue is public safety. The kind of cream color is replacement upgrade of current infrastructure.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And then new infrastructure is the greenish.
Okay. And then, is there, what's being affected as we move this money to the Fire Department?
Nothing in this case. It's just use of, like, extra, I true-up based on revenues that come in every year. And so this is just using some extra we've recognized with revenues. I didn't take from any project for this.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Three-point-two, please.
Set final millage rate of five point eight five, eight eight five zero mils for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, against non-exams real and personal property within the City of Clearwater pass ordinance ninety-seven thirteen dash twenty-three on first reading.
Wednesday is the first of two public hearings required by Florida statute to finalize the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four operating capital improvement budget. This item approves the ordinance to adopt a millage rate of five point eight eight five zero mils for the upcoming year. This is the same rate as levied in the current year. And then also, as part of the process on Wednesday for this agenda item, I have a presentation to go through, very similar to what we did in June. I can go through it today as well, if you'd like, or we can just save it for the benefit of residents on Thursday.
With your pleasure. Residents on Thursday?
Save it for Thursday.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one?
Oh, tomorrow, I'm sorry. It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the meeting, yes.
Wednesday, yes.
Yes, okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So in looking at this, you know, we've taken some really important steps in the last two or three years in the city to reduce costs. Examples are, we've lowered energy costs via energy efficiencies, synergistics, and installing some solar on a variety of buildings. And I think, you know, I'd like us to discuss taking additional steps for lowering costs for residents. So given the proposed budget that we have here from city staff and our additional ad valorem taxes, it seems that we have room with our increased ad valorem taxes and reserves without impacting other areas of the budget to lower the millage rate by some amount to lower costs for residents. So we did that last year with a point zero seven percent reduction totaling one million dollars, which people appreciated. And I just thought, you know, I'd like to understand what would be the impact of lowering the rate by the same amount in this budget.
Well, we'd have to look at everything. So it's a balanced budget, and you can't use reserves to, for operating expenditures. So we'd have to look at one-time needs, so capital projects, and we'd have to cut somewhere. So it wouldn't, it would take time to work through that, even if it is a million dollars. There's a, we affected a lot of departments with that. Last year is a little easier in the fact that the park wasn't open yet, and we scaled back, you know, really focusing in on what we had budgeted in Parks and Rec to just be the couple months of opening, and that worked out. I don't think it would be nearly as easy this year, but if that was what you, you know, the collective, if you wanted to do something like that, we would have to make.
Make it work.
And we'd have to do it very fast because of trim requirements to advertise. We have to advertise our budget in the newspaper before the final hearing, which is in two weeks, so, you have anything else? If I may? You know, when we were preparing this budget, we contemplated all of that. I mean, this, it's something that we knew is important in terms of having a balanced budget. There are several reasons why we did not utilize any form of a rollback rate, most of them, most importantly, is relating to Cochrane Park being open. It's just not an opportunity to push that back. But in addition, if you remember our strategic planning session, we have an aggressive list of capital projects that were agreed upon as priorities. All of major repairs and replacements of existing infrastructure that are going to impact the general fund revenues. Also, the city is also not immune to the inflationary increases. We are seeing those, just as everybody else is, through insurance increases that were, I think, over thirty percent this year. We had a fourteen percent in workers' comp, plus the cost to do these projects, as we are learning as these come forward, has increased for us as well. So in addition, you know that the cost of personnel is sixty-one percent of the general fund budget. And we know that our wages have not kept up with inflation. We've heard that, we heard that from the CWA members. You know that we're in negotiations right now. In addition, we are in the midst of a pay and class compensation plan that is being conducted right now. And while we do have funds that are budgeted for increases in this budget, it did not include what will be needed for that. We just didn't have the information. And we will, we'll get that shortly, because again, our implementation goal for that was in January. But those are the major reasons why we did not. So while, yes, we acknowledge that we had revenue growth, the balance, the budgets balanced, taking into consideration all those things. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment. I was, I was in support of the decrease last year, but last year's not this year. I'm very sensitive to the fact about our staffing, and I do think that it's going to be, or continue to be, a challenge. It is balanced at this point. I'm comfortable with it, based on all the work we did on the strategic plan. And we also have some really once-in-a-lifetime opportunities that are coming up that will be very beneficial to the city, and we need to plan for that. So I'm comfortable, as we are right now, leaving it.
Any other comments? And my only comment would be, and I would support something like that maybe a month ago, but I think at this point in time, with what we're up against with the TRIM notice and those types of things, and what the city manager explained to me in my one-on-one meetings, and we talked about, I don't say, I think it's a problem if we try to do something like that now.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Three-point-three, please.
Approve the City of Clearwater annual operating budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year and pass ordinance ninety-seven fourteen on first reading.
So this is the first reading of the ordinance for the capital improvement budget that we will be reading for the public on Wednesday night. There have been no changes to the proposed budget.
Questions or comments? Anyone? Okay. Thank you. Three-point-four, please.
Approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four annual capital improvement budget. Establish a six-year plan for the capital improvement program and pass ordinance ninety-seven fifteen dash twenty-three on first reading.
This is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the capital improvement budget and plan for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. There have been no changes to the capital budget from the proposed release budget in June.
Questions or comments on this item? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Economic Development and Housing, four-point-one.
Approve the twenty twenty-three affordable housing inventory list pursuant to requirements of Chapter One, sixty-six point zero four five one. Adopt Resolution Twenty-three dash thirteen and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Thank you. Chuck Lane, Economic Development, Housing Department. Because we receive annual allocations of state housing initiatives, partnership program funding each year, we're required by state statute to produce a list of city-owned properties that are suitable or appropriate for use as affordable housing. Council must approve this list every three years. Council approved this last year, but new legislation from the Live Local Act requires us to update the list by October one of this year. We evaluated all city-owned and CRA-owned properties and determined which properties may be suitable for affordable housing. Last year's list included eight parcels. Some of those parcels were adjacent to one another, so the eight parcels really made up four development opportunities. One of those sites sold for construction of a single-family home, one is under contract for a multifamily townhome project, and one is currently under a competitive disposition process to build a single-family home. This year's list contains thirty-one parcels, which makes up eleven development sites. The reason for the additional properties is mostly because we include properties that are suitable for mixed use. We're hoping the Live Local Act will incentivize mixed-use development on some of these sites. The only, only one site on the list is suitable for a single-family home, and that's a property that is under that competitive disposition process that I mentioned a moment ago. The remainder of the properties are suitable for multifamily development, some with and some without a commercial component. Three of the sites are in the downtown CRA, and the other eight sites are in North Greenwood CRA, with six of them fronting North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. I can go into more details of any of these properties if you'd like, but for now, I'll hand it over to you and take questions.
Any questions or comments on this one? Yes?
There's something request. I met with Clearwater Alliance for Housing, several members, and they were asking for a lot, a bit of information, including this. And they asked me, and I'm ignorant about this, but is there a way that this information could be easily accessed by the public?
They're required to put it on our website, and that's what we will do.
We were having a hard time locating it, so I'll work on it.
It's also on the agenda.
It's also on the agenda. It's attached to the item.
But if, so they have to go through the agenda, or can they just go to the website independently?
They can go to their website because they're required, but it's also available on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. So I was thinking about comparing, like you kind of brought up that last year we had one property. The thirty-one properties that you've listed this year, are those all multiple or are they single-family?
There's one single-family lot. The rest of them are assemblages. So there's ten other sites that are assemblages. So there's a total of eleven development opportunities.
Eleven, eleven, okay.
Maybe five units.
With ten of them being multifamily.
Okay, so we're making progress on it.
Making progress. We have a lot of interest in some of these sites.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hi, Chuck. I just, you know, on the legislative text, I got a question about how we went from, uh, what did we have last year? We went from thirteen? Oh, no, no, that was the resolution. We went from such a small number last, eight properties last year to thirty-one parcels this year. So we've got four words there. We use a total, so the sentence reads, "In twenty-two included a total of eight properties. Resolution twenty-three thirteen is drafted proposes thirty-one parcels or eleven tracts of land." And so I just, for me, it's easier to understand, is it property? Is it parcel? Is it tracts of land, you know? Because does it mean that those thirty-one parcels are different than thirty-one properties?
We're required by the statute to list the, the different properties and their addresses.
Okay.
So we comply with that. It's a little confusing because when those properties are, when we want to sell those properties in assemblages, we wouldn't just sell them one parcel at a time.
Right.
So we try to make it known through additional information on our website that, yes, there's thirty-one parcels, but there's eleven development sites. I'm not going to answer your question.
Okay. So we're going to use thirty-one parcels, which are individual properties, for eleven sites?
Yes.
Okay. Parcels for eleven sites. And then, and then when we look at, when you look at that PowerPoint of your, all the, of these properties, so these are the eleven sites, right?
Yes.
And you've got, you know, the square footage, the zoning, and then the density, the number of units. And what I notice is when it's zoned commercial and we want mixed use required, we can usually get more housing on it with commercial than it seems like medium density residential, because like when I look at the twelfth one, the very last one, it's, you know, this looks large, but it's only for three units. And that's because it's zoned medium density residential, right?
Yes, I think that's zoned for, the, the north part of that is zoned seven and a half units an acre. The parcel to the south is actually fifteen units an acre. When you do the math, it comes out to a maximum of three. That does not include our, our density bonus for affordable housing.
Okay.
Potentially be more. The Live Local Act potentially could increase densities.
Okay. And so when I look at something that's zoned medium density residential, so this, this image kind of, I think, helps, you know, helps me look at it this way, is, is there a way that we can really incentivize or encourage, I don't know, require, probably not require? But when you have these larger parcels on medium density residential, to really encourage or incentivize an ADU unit when somebody's building on that, it would, number one, expand our housing options in the city, and number two, provide some income for that homeowner at that property. And, and they have more space, it seems like, in an MDR-zoned area.
Is this the site you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is an interesting site because what, what the city owns is outlined in yellow.
Okay.
These parcels here are owned by one of our partners.
Okay.
It's a higher density. It's fifteen units an acre.
Commercial, so that's that mixed use.
It's all residential. It's all residential. So this is a residential opportunity with a partner. This is a higher site.
Okay. But would that be, you know, would that work for ADUs or tiny homes on that site to get more density than three units?
Density we can get there with the, with the density bonus is ten to eleven units. I can't remember. And that maxes out the site. There's really, I mean, ADUs just, I don't know what you're talking, what you're referring to, but we would, we would build a, you know, we would want to see an apartment complex or a townhome complex that maxes out that site.
Okay. Okay. So where it says three units, we can really go up to ten or eleven?
Well, that's only because we have a partner that owns additional land.
And I, I just, you know, I have this, the most recent home dedication we had with Tampa Bay Housing Authority was on a medium-density residential kitty corner from the North Greenwood Rec Center. There was a ton of extra yard space that, that to me looked like it could work for an accessory dwelling unit there, you know?
If you'll recall, the conference, a plan was supposed to come to you in September, but because of the storm, it won't be until October. But that will give us the authority to actually implement accessory dwelling units. And then we're going to be working on some code amendments to enable that. So in the future, we should be able to accomplish these kinds of things.
Okay. And so are those properties there? Thank you. I think that, that's something to look forward to.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Appoint eleven members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, including one member of city council as a locally elected official.
So we have another obligation as a recipient of state, state housing initiative partnership funding. And that is we are required by Florida statute to assemble an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee every year. The committee is tasked with reviewing land use policies such as ordinances, regulations, zoning and development standards, and other things that might, that we have in place that might affect the cost of residential development. Committee's objective is to identify potential barriers and incentives that might impact a developer's decision to build affordable housing. We use the committee's the Neighborhood and Affordable Housing Advisory Board. Acronym, of course, is the NAHAB. We currently have one vacant seat on the NAHAB. There's an item later on today's agenda and presumably on Thursday evening to appoint David Harder to the Neighborhood and Affordable Housing Advisory Board. If so, he will fill one of the eleven committee's seats as a member of the NAHAB. Three of the remaining seats are filled by people meeting specific criteria according to the statute. Three of those members, of those three members, one is an essential services representative, one's a residential home builder, and one represents the local planning agency. Staff interprets a local planning agency seat to be filled by someone on the community development board. We typically ask CDB to, to provide a recommendation to council to approve a member of that board. We're not able to do that this year because the most, because the last two CDB meetings were canceled, the most recent because of the hurricane last week. Staff is recommending you appoint Bruce Rector to the seat. Mr. Rector was recommended by the CDB last year, and I confirmed with him that he's willing and able to fill the seat this year. The remaining seat must be filled by a, by a member of city council. Councilman Beckman served, served a role last year. The council is required to make the appointment each time the committee is seated. So I'll take questions.
You want to do it again?
I'd love to do that.
Okay. That's your, that's your candidate. That's your appointee right now, serving another term. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Parks and Recreation.
Approved a one-year agreement with Juvenile Welfare Board and the City of Clearwater for funding youth programs.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Sandy Clayton, the Recreation Division Manager with Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm presenting our annual agreement with the Juvenile Welfare Board to provide grant funding supporting after-school and summer camp programs at both Rossford and North Greenwood Recreation, Recreation Centers. In alignment with the city's strategic plan in the priority area of community well-being, these programs support neighborhood identity and empower community pride by helping local children make healthy lifestyle choices, achieve academic success, and increase social and leadership skills. The grant helps fund staff, equipment, supplies, as well as qualified tutors. Additionally, this grant supports the city's elementary school water safety program by providing funds to pay for lifeguards to teach swim lessons to kindergartners through third graders from four local Clearwater Elementary Schools. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Consent? Thank you. Five point two, please.
Approved a purchase order to shade systems for the purchase of and installation of athletic shade structures at Bay Care Hall Park Field.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Management. The piece I'm presenting here is for a shade structure over the bullpen area at Bay Care Hall Park Field. We have a professional development league agreement with the Phillies. Several years ago, Major League Baseball came in and looked at their minor league teams. There was forty teams that were so far out of compliance, actually did away with them. So this is part of our agreement with the Phillies to provide them with a proper facility. This will prevent shade and heat exhaustion to their players in the bullpen area. At this time, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions or comments on this item?
Are the shades retractable?
No, they're a fixed shade system, much like the ones we have at our various parks. It's got a shade cloth on top. The, the nice thing about these shade systems is that they are good to up to ninety miles an hour with the shade canopy on and up to hundred fifty with it off. So if we have a hurricane coming, they get removed. If it's a tropical storm, we do not have to remove them in this situation. So it, it gives us a benefit as far as maintenance and labor for our staff.
I didn't know what this sentence means. It's talking about the cost, but it says shipping and handling in the amount of two thousand two hundred and eleven dollars is procured as impractical?
So it's impractical to bid shipping and handling because the company ships it, so that, that's their cost.
That's what then, it's fine. Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Consent? Thank you. Police Department, six point one.
Approved an event license agreement between Jones Lang LaSalle Americas in its capacity as the agent for the owner of Countryside Mall.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council, Eric Gandy, Police Department. So this is an event license agreement for Countryside Mall and a whole harmless agreement with them for us to have our national night out on their property. This is an exciting event. It's probably our second biggest outreach opportunity behind Neighborhoods Day. And we can bring all our stuff out there, communicate with the public, so it's been very beneficial for us for a long time. And we're asking your approval so we can move this forward for October.
Any comments or questions? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Six point two, please.
When you financial assistance agreement between the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and the City of Clearwater necessary to facilitate current mutual aid agreement between the two entities?
The council's previously approved the mutual aid agreement we have with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. This is effectively a force multiplier for us. It's been in force for over a decade, and we've renewed it. This is merely the financial piece that allows us to seek reimbursement for overtime and training costs.
Questions or comments? Consent? Yes. Thank you. Six point three, please.
Approved an agreement with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office and the amount not exceed four hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty cents for forensic crime scene processing.
Afternoon, Council, Mayor. Major Todd Johnson of the Police Department. This is an annual renewal agreement between the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office and the Police Department that's been in place since nineteen ninety-four. The agreement is for ancillary services to include crime scene processing, fingerprint examination, property and evidence storage, and Pinellas Juvenile Assessment Center shared security costs. Total cost of the agreement is four hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. The individual services items reflect a seven point six increase for each service except for the Pinellas Juvenile Assessment Center fees. However, projections for each service item were adjusted based on the last few years' usage, which subsequently reflect a fourteen percent decrease from last year's agreement. The agreement is based on the following associated costs. Crime scene processing, we're purchasing nine hundred cases purchased. That's a decrease of eleven hundred cases. That's based on a three-year average of eight hundred and forty-eight. The cost is two hundred eighty-six dollars and nine cents per case. The previous cost was two hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety cents. For fingerprint examination, we're purchasing four hundred and fifty cases. That's a decrease from one thousand cases based on a three-year average of four hundred and forty-eight. Cost per case is a hundred and five dollars and seventeen cents per case. The previous cost was ninety-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents per case. For property and evidence storage, we're purchasing eleven hundred and sixty, eleven thousand six hundred and fifty items. That's a decrease from twelve thousand items based on a three-year average of eleven thousand sixty-one. The cost is fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents per item. The previous cost was thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. The security fees for the Juvenile Assessment Center were purchasing two hundred and seventy-five bookings. That's a decrease from three hundred and fifty based on a three-year average of two hundred and thirty-four. Cost per booking is eighty-four dollars, and there's no change to that cost. Any funds remaining from the unused services at the end of the contract refunded to the city. Funding for the agreement is included in the Police Department's request fiscal year twenty-four operating budget for contractual services. Questions?
Any questions or comments?
The property and evidence storage, that's an average as well. All those numbers there are averaged.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Six point four, please.
Approved acceptance of University of North Florida grant for pedestrian bicycle safety grant award.
Mayor, Council, Eric Gandy, and I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce some of my command staff that will be coming before you. Major Johnson had that piece for you, and you'll see more of them in the future. I want them to have the experience of interacting with council and being able to field their questions on the, on the subject matter that they're experts in. So I think it'll be healthy for them and healthy for council to have that interaction. So this is our high-visibility enforcement and education grant. And what we use this for is pushing out information on pedestrian safety. Initially, we have a campaign where we push out information. Then the initial phases are we train the officers. We have them go out in the field, identify locations, and educate people. We'll stop them if they're committing a violation, educate them on proper pedestrian safety, and then finally, there's an enforcement piece to this grant. It's certainly needed. I mean, we all know the dangers and particularly the pedestrians face in this county. I think we're in the top twenty-five in the state. The good thing is this year, our numbers have been trending down a little bit in terms of overall traffic fatalities. It's at nine year-to-date. However, four of those are pedestrians. So you can see how they're overrepresented in this space, and that's why I think these high-visibility enforcement details are critically important.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this item? Yes.
So when you look at the dates, so this project will commence within thirty days and will end on or before May tenth, so it's less than six months?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's a quick turnaround on these, so we have to move quickly to, to get the pressers out there and then follow up with the selection of the officers, the training of the officers. And it's always a scramble at the end to ensure that we use all those funds by the conclusion of the grant.
So that grant puts that time, it's got to be within those months?
Yes.
And then you stated as with previous grants, selected officers will, will receive specific training as required. I'm sure there's, you know, a time or cost associated with that. Can't we just choose the officers that have already been trained and save some of that time or money?
So there is, there is overlap, but the grant requirements are such that they are very specific on, on, you know, what they want us to do. So you have to follow those instructions to a T to ensure that we've done everything in compliance with the grant.
And then when you look at the, at the letter of agreement and you look at the areas that we're going to focus on, exhibit, see the locations. So you've got the roadways and then the time range and then the days of the week. So what would residents who live near Crescent Beach Club on Gulf Boulevard expect to see on a Wednesday, Thursday, or Saturday? Are they going to notice anything different?
So you're diving into the weeds on what to expect for the deployment, but if it's an identified location and we are scheduled to do it at that period of time, you'll see additional officers at that location and, and conducting education. Stops of pedestrians that, that walk against the light or in, in that area, don't use the crosswalk specifically. I think those are, so what they've done, they select the intersections based on their data and locations based on their data. There's tier one and tier two. The higher priorities are almost always Gulf to Bay. That's been historic. But what you'll find is the violations tend to center around pedestrians not at crosswalks and we, or intersections, mid-block crossings. And, you know, what we see in our data when it comes to the fatalities, that same rings through. Mid-block, at, at dark, sometimes alcohol involved. So it's definitely important to, to try and intercept those folks and, and educate them. You know, are we going to change everyone's behavior? No, but if we can drive the numbers down fractionally, we're, we're doing better.
Is this, this probably isn't exclusively the bike team. It's other officers as well?
No, it's officers throughout the agency.
Okay. And then those time ranges, which is like military time, but some of it is dark when it's dark out? Is that correct?
Yeah. I, I, I'd have to look. Yeah, I'd have to look at all the times and the breakdowns to give you an assessment of each and each location and, you know, where it's taking place. But it speaks for itself in terms of where we have the deployments. So if we have a deployment at Gulf to Bay in Belcher and it's scheduled for seventeen hundred, it would start at five P.M. and it runs till nineteen hundred, it would go till seven P.M. And that's where the high visibility enforcement would take place.
Okay, yeah. Just thought it was interesting, it's particular right down to the time and the days of the week.
Yeah, and it's based on their data, and it's based on crash reports that they sift through and determine, okay, this is a period of time where it might be most effective, either based on the crash data or they can infer from the crash data. Well, maybe there's more pedestrian activity at that point in time because we're having a higher frequency.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Public Works.
Approved the final plat for landmark of Clearwater, physically located at twenty-six eighty Landmark Drive.
Afternoon, Council, Tom Mahoney, Public Works Department. So this plot will create two lots out of the eight, about eight and a half acres, consisting of three point nine five acres and four point six eight acres. This will subdivide the existing school and the existing church into two individual lots. This is approved by the Community Development Board on May sixteenth of this year. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments on this item? Yes.
I was just wondering what type of medical clinic is gonna be there? Do you know? Any details?
That's not really part of the plotting process, so I do not know that.
Okay.
Anything else? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven point two, please.
Approved the termination issuance of a three-year lease agreement by Requesting Intercultural Advocacy Institute.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate Coordinator. Your consent review today is a twofold item. It is a lease termination and then a re-issuance to the same lessee. In summary, the lessee is the tenant, current tenant of the city, Intercultural Advocacy Institute, or HAC, and they have a three-year lease, current, which will be soon expiring. They have contacted us and requested an additional three-year term, which we could not grant. It exceeded the five-year surplus. So at that point, the only alternative was to expire their current lease agreement and then reissue a new three-year term lease agreement that complies with the city ordinance. As a background to that, all previous terms of the prior lease have carried forward through legal review and by our staff review. City staff have reviewed and approved this lease agreement. Thank you very much. Any questions, please?
Any questions? Comments? Okay. Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved purchase order to American Grinding Company in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk grinding.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Alia Zmawski with Public Works. I'm the Right Way Division Manager. For your review and consent approval, a purchase order request for American Grinding Company of Grand Rapids, Michigan, in the amount of five hundred thousand for sidewalk grinding on a unit price basis. To summarize it, American Grinding will grind about eleven thousand, twelve thousand locations of lifted sidewalks panels caused by adjacent trees that are identified in the backlog to maintain public infrastructure and mobility systems. Funds are available in the capital improvement project to fund the purchase order. This is in, I'm sorry, this effort is in alignment with the Clearwater strategic objectives to provide superior public service by reducing the backlog of requests and meeting our environmental stewardship by maintaining our urban forestry. City staff has reviewed and approved this request. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Yes.
So it says here on the text that the locations will be chosen based on the current backlog of orders for sidewalk repair. Can you give us a brief update on where we are with those sidewalk repairs or what our backlog looks like?
Last time I checked, there was about a hundred and nine requests.
Okay.
Maybe all differentiated.
A hundred and nine requests? Okay.
It could've changed since the last time I looked at it.
Okay. And then we allocated two million dollars in ARPA funds for sidewalk repair, and then according to our dashboard, we've spent about one point four million on sidewalk repair of those ARPA funds. So I'm wondering, this, the funding comes out of the CIP funds, but not, is it part of ARPA funds? It's, is it ARPA funds?
It's.
No. Oh, no? Okay. I just wonder why this wouldn't be part of those ARPA funds, since we have to get them encumbered and spent by a certain time.
Terracotta City Engineer. The ARPA funds were in addition, so we're actually getting more sidewalk done than we normally would, so that was in addition to money that we allocated from the capital. And those funds are being spent through our annual sidewalk contractor.
Okay.
Not with in-house staff, not with this grinding.
Okay. But even with our annual sidewalk contractor and then this grinding, we still have a little bit of a backlog?
Yes.
Yes.
Because you've still got workers coming in.
Yeah, okay.
And the list of backlog, some of them come to our contractor, some that are more complicated, typically related to tree heaving or drainage issues or things like that, those may stay in-house.
Okay.
But a bulk of them do come to the annual contractor maintenance contract.
But it's not like a three-year backlog or anything anymore? Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Anything else? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approved the drainage easement conveyance request from the landowner Weaver Enterprises.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. Robert Casmer, Real Estate Coordinator, Public Works Engineering. For your review and consent approval today is a drainage easement conveyance request by Weaver Enterprises. In summary, the current box cover system located at eighteen seventy-five Gulf to Bay Boulevard has been heavily damaged by excessive water erosion with ongoing efforts to secure or lessen unsuccessful. In response, engineering has designed an enlarged stormwater flow system with a reducer to better control the flow. The new design will align, connect, and equally match FDOT's current flow with this connection requiring this additional easement area. Also, the presented sign easement, as shown, does have a typo, page typo error. That was due to the fact of spacing on Word. Legal has reviewed and confirmed that's not gonna be a problem. Any and all affected utilities will be corrected. City staff have reviewed and approved this request.
Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Department, eight point one, please.
Approved Pinellas County EMS ALS First Responder Agreement Amendment Number One.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Scott Ellis, Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. This request is for approval of the amended Emergency Medical Services ALS First Responder Agreement with Pinellas County. This agreement was approved in September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, with a two-year term that started October one of twenty twenty-two and will run through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Under Section seven oh one of the agreement, if there's an increase within the projected budget for more than three percent, then the agreement must be amended. This upcoming year, our requested budget to be reimbursed, which is about seven million six hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, is a net result of three point two percent, so therefore it needs to be amended. Additionally, in this amendment, the county will maintain a new traffic preemption system for our units that utilize GPS and mapping software to signal lights as they respond on routes for quicker response times, as well as a new adjusted vehicle reimbursement of three hundred thousand dollars for rescue units. In full transparency on that, I'll have another agenda item coming in a couple of weeks that has to do with a new rescue that we're talking about here, and the total amount for that right now is three hundred and thirty thousand. But that is a projected view. We're in a time where we, the manufacturers can't promise a chassis, so they're projecting something that will be in a few years, two and a half years to be exact. So this three hundred thousand is if we were to get it this year, would cover that. I did reach out to the county to make sure of that, so they did send me an email back saying the county's intent is to reimburse the city for full cost of rescue units. And for, we have Rescue Forty-Eight documented in this amendment, and it'll increase the budget cap each year as we move forward, as these units continue to go up in price. Lastly, as we transition to a new CAD program with law enforcement, one requirement in this one is that all personnel accessing the system must pass an FDLE background check. We are currently putting all of our personnel through that process, and we look at going live potentially date of May of twenty twenty-four. With that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions or comments? Yes.
There's no anticipated problems with the new background check requirement.
So that's an unknown. We don't anticipate anything. You never know with humans what something may be lingering out there, so we will do everything we can to look at how we work through that. Nothing so far. We have found nothing that we're surprised by.
Other questions? No? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Public Communications, please.
Approved agreement with New World Communications on behalf of its television station, WTV, Fox thirteen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Joelle Castelli, Public Communications Director. As you know, during the grand opening of Coachman Park, we had a lot of media coverage. Fox thirteen did a drone zone and flew the whole park with a drone. That video was narrated by Mayor Anst, and this is the formal process to get us to allow, be allowed to use it on the city's website.
Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes.
Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Maybe they can voice that back over with a better voice in the future. The video was very good. Ten, please. Solid Waste, ten point one.
Approved purchase order to Toto Incorporated for residential container purchases.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. Curvin St. Amy, Solid Waste Director. For your approval today is a purchase order to Toto Incorporated. Solid Waste Department collects refuge and recyclers from our residents, customers with sixty-four and ninety-four gallon plastic containers. Toto has been recommended again due to the durability, formality of their containers. Toto contract is a piggyback contract through the Southwell contract, which expires on May twenty twenty-five. So prior to this agenda item, the city has spent eighty-eight thousand one hundred and sixteen thousand forty-eight cents for purchasing of Toto product, reason why we're requesting additional funds for containers. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay, consent? Thank you. Ten point two, please.
Approved purchase order to Pinellas County Solid Waste for the disposal of solid waste at their waste and energy plant.
Mayor, Council members, Curvin St. Amy, Solid Waste Director. For your approval, is a purchase order to Pinellas County for solid waste disposal, solid waste. Pinellas County operates the county-only waste and energy plant and landfill. All the cities, solid waste collected by, in the city, is taken to this facility effective October first, twenty twenty-three. The tipping fee to Pinellas County is raising to fifty-one dollars per ton. Previously was forty-seven, seventy-five per ton for the tipping fee. This represents a rate increase of six point eight percent. However, overall, projected cost increase for disposal of solid waste would be four point one percent. Staff believe, due to our recycling program, we believe that the cost would be less for solid waste.
Any questions or comments on this item? Consent?
No, just had the comment I was gonna say is that, boy, it just keeps going up every year.
Yes, sir. So in twenty twenty-two, we spent about four million three hundred eighty-two thousand, and there was a six point eight percent increase. In twenty-three, we spent a little bit over about four thousand six hundred thousand, and then we stopped to about five million.
Okay. Consent?
Yep.
Thank you. City Clerk, eleven point one, please.
Appoint David Harder to the Neighborhood and Affordable Housing Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term through June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Council members, Ms. Camacho accepted a different position and can no longer serve on the board, and we have Mr. Harder's application for your consideration in that category.
Any comments, questions?
I think he'd be great for this.
Okay.
Yep.
Consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Eleven point two, please.
Appoint Rick Broom to the Marine Advisory Board to a term set to expire September eighth, two thousand twenty-seven. Council members, Mr. Boris was serving on the board and is not interested in being reappointed, but we do have an application by Mr. Rick Broom, a retired president of a marketing company who submitted an application for your consideration.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Yeah, I know him. He's, lives out on Iowa State. He's a good guy, good for.
Okay, consent?
Yep.
Thank you. Next item?
Appoint two individuals to the Community Development Board to fill a remainder of two unexpired terms, one through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-six, and one through April thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Council members, we had two members that had to be removed from the board due to lack of attendance. For your consideration, we have applications for Nicholas Anderson, Kurt Hinrich, and Edward Williams, as well as Michael Bozakis, that I circulated that application via email that was received after the agenda was published. Those are individuals that have the desired professional backgrounds that are listed in code, and then we also have applications from Rebecca Urban, William Johnson, and Polly Ward for your consideration.
Okay. Questions or comments on this?
So this is definitely by far the most challenging board there is in terms of dedication in terms of time and resources, and so one of my concerns is this revolving door that we're getting. So when I was looking at the candidates, I was looking for, and I was impressed by two, simply, well, not simply, but one of the two, one of the things that stood out about two of these candidates was that they've already served and they have a good record of serving. They were active, and they showed that they really respected the code, but was very sensitive to the residents', I guess, feelings or views. And so the two that I would like to see is Mr. Bozakis, who's very involved in the community, and then Mr. Hinrichs. Those are the two for me, that would be my choice.
Yes.
I know them both. I served on the, I believe, Charter Review Committee with Bozakis, and he's an attorney. I enjoyed being on that committee. We had a lot of good input from him. And also Kurt Heinrich took over the COO of Caladese, and I've known him for a long time, but he's a civil engineer. He'd be great for that, so I'd say the same thing. Those are two. I thought about Bill Johnson, but these two names, well, at least Michael Bozakis came up, and I already had kind of Kurt in mind, so those are the two that I would prefer to have on the board.
That's my understanding. Mr., how do you pronounce the name?
Bozakis.
Bozakis served as the chair of this and passed and did a good job?
Experienced attorney in the field and has served very well in the past. The only reason why he did not continue serving is state law does not allow him to serve more than two terms.
And I believe he would be okay with being the permanent position versus the alternative.
Okay.
I'm all right with Mr. Bozakis, but I would advocate very strongly for Bill Johnson to be on this board for multiple reasons. Number one, he's served on the council for many years and knows the types of issues that come before the council. Number two, he serves in a leadership role with the Clearwater Neighborhoods Coalition, and he sends developmental updates to them and us all the time and summarizes them. He's very much involved, and we've had numerous letters of support for Bill Johnson from our residents to be appointed to this board. This is a board that is this quasi-judicial board. They follow the rule, you know, that's written out with guidance from the attorney, and I just think there's a real comfort level from members throughout, residents throughout our community, especially those associated with. our community, especially those associated with the Clearwater Neighborhoods Coalition, to have Bill sit on that board. And I would advocate very strongly for him to have a seat there.
Okay. Any other comment? I mean, I respect all the people that have applied and know Mr. Johnson for a long time, served with him for a long time. This seems to be a position to me, though, that has a particular background that you need as a profession, like an engineer or what have you. And that's why the people up the top were recommended. So I would agree with my counterparts to the left, nothing against Mr. Johnson or anyone else, but those are the two people that I would prefer to see appointed to this board. So I guess we'll talk about that on Thursday night. Okay? Anything else on this? All right. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next item. Where are we here?
Appoint an individual to the Environmental Advisory Board to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through September thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Council members, unfortunately, Ms. Sheila Sullivan had to resign from the board. She moved outside the city limits. And although she served very well, we have to find a replacement. And so we have applications from Kelly Davenport and Polly Ward for your consideration.
Okay. What's your preference? Anyone know, please?
I'm leaning towards Kelly Davenport. I like that she's had several personal sustainability projects, and that stood out for me. She did mention it, yeah, in her application, sustainability. I hope she is familiar already with green print and, yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so.
Place on consent?
Pull on consent? Can always be pulled if I have to.
Everybody's okay.
All right. I'm fine with that. Okay. Where are we? City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Twelve point one is the agreement with HRNA Consultants. As the council knows, we've been working closely with HRNA on the Gotham deal, and this is just the contract to make sure they get paid. Surprisingly, they actually do want to get paid. They do great work, but not running a charity, and so that's the agreement.
All right. Any questions or comments on this item? Consent? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, I just have a comment. I'm glad we brought them on board because they have the knowledge and to really lay things out for us. We're mostly laypeople up here, and I think we needed to have somebody that could look into that industry and really tell us what's going on, so.
Okay. Consent?
Yep.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, Mayor. Twelve point two and twelve point three are companion items, but they are resolutions, so they go separate from each other and cannot go on consent. These are the updates to the council rules, so the council has requested. I've presented the draft of them, and that's pretty much all there is to say on that topic.
Any comments or questions on these two items?
Not on this one, on the second one. So this is just the order of business. This is just, we take item, comments, items, not on the agenda at the end of the meeting. Correct.
Plazing it the reverse, but yes, I mean, the agenda as proposed in twelve point two would be for agenda items to come first. And so then that has the effect of taking other items, moving them to a later sequence in the evening.
And then I think there was a comment about, about a resolution and a number articulated. These are the examples. Must be referencing, on our resolution, referencing a point three. Where do I have that in my notes? Maybe it's the first one. Sorry.
Let Mr. Robert go until you find out, if that's okay. Go ahead.
Oh, here, I'm sorry. It's, pardon me?
Go ahead.
It's the resolution number twenty-three fourteen, where we have on section F, number four, comments and support and comments and opposition, see subsection three below regarding time limitations for speakers. And then we have under quasi judicial hearings, number four, see subsection three below regarding timeline. And there isn't a subsection three that I saw?
This is a, there's a legislative format that gets used when creating resolutions, and particularly when amending council rules, or for that matter, changing legislation either at the state or federal level. One of the conventional ways of denoting legislation is that in the bottom of the resolution, on page three, there's a triple asterisk that appears above section two and just kind of at the bottom of section one.
I see it.
The triple asterisk denotes that there's additional content that is not being changed or modified in any way, but it's part of the current rule.
Okay.
And so that subsection three is part of the existing rule. It's not being changed or modified. And so the triple asterisk simply represents that there is additional content that is unchanging, but still exists.
So subsection three is under there?
Correct. So none of that is changing unless, of course, council gives the direction to make any of those changes. But at this moment, there is nothing proposed being to change unless council has something it'd like to change.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I just want to make a comment on this because I know we're probably going to be talking about it again on Thursday. You know, I've had both sides of this. I've had comments from people on both sides. Well, they don't think it's good to move, move it later in the meeting, you know, because it's unfair to people that want to come in. And I kind of disagree with that. Look, there's a lot of councils that have their council meetings during the day. We have ours at night specifically to make it easier for people to come in and speak. But what goes with that is we also require staff to be here. And when we have so much public comment, the staff is here for an hour, hour and a half, listening to, I don't think it's fair to them. So I don't think it's a bad thing to place it at the end. Give staff, I mean, we're really all here to do business for the city. Get that out of the way, and if somebody has something to say, they could watch it on TV. If it looks like it's going slow, they could time their way to come in, or they can sit here and listen to the meeting. That's fine, too. But that's kind of why I think that it's a good idea to move it to the end. I don't think it's fair to staff.
Okay. Anything else?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to twelve point five now.
Let's see. Twelve point five, and I believe through twelve point nine are all second readings, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on any of the second readings? Okay. Thank you. City Manager verbal reports.
Hi.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. If I may, please call our emergency manager, Javon Graham, to discuss the declaration of a state of emergency.
Good afternoon. Javon Graham, Division Chief for Emergency Management. As you stated earlier with your, with your kudos to the staff, we started pushing out information on August twenty-fourth for a potential storm. This one was particularly difficult because it hadn't actually formed yet. So you always get those naysayers like, oh, it's not really going to happen. Well, it happened. And fortunately, we were close enough that it actually stayed offshore, but we did have impacts. And I do want to say before we go into this, the staff behind us, or your staff, is extremely competent, professional. They prepared the city better than any other cities could have hoped for. And the good thing is, or the interesting is, that a lot of our staff, directors, managers were new, and we were actually going to train on a scenario just this week. Well, we got the real deal. So on August twenty-fourth, started pushing stuff out. The state started pushing out the emergency declaration on the twenty-sixth, and then we followed through as a county and then as a city. So the item for you is our declaration of emergency, our locals' declaration of emergency, which allowed us to get funding or start the process so that if we do need to get reimbursed or have the funding opportunities we can, and it gets us prepared. And so if there's any questions, I'm more than willing to answer.
Any questions, comments?
Good job.
Outstanding job by everyone. I see you. Thank you. Hopefully, we won't have to do that again until next year or a couple of years down the road. Anything else?
One more thing, please, sir. I want to call up Micah Maxwell in regards to our sister city partnership.
Thank you, Micah Maxwell, Chief Innovation Officer. For you today, we have the formalization of our sister cities agreement with, it's McKeelpon. Got that close?
Well, that was good. That was good.
I was practicing in the back there. We, last year, in September, we approved Resolution twenty-two eighteen, which pushed us towards coming up with an agreement to be sister cities. We completed that agreement. We had a signing, actually, on the nineteenth of August, and this is the ratification of the agreement. It does not require us to do anything. It does not commit us to do any, any specific funding towards it, but we will be working towards programming in the next year. We will be presiding, proposing that those, the information related to that in the coming months. That is the agreement.
Any comments, questions? An opportunity to go out there, it was a great event with the mayor and other dictators, and a very good turnout at the church. So it's, everyone's looking forward to it. Thank you.
Council, may I place the item on consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. City Attorney verbal reports?
Nothing right now, sir.
Okay. City Council discussion items. Okay, I brought this up. You know, I've been following what the Charter Review Committee has been doing, and I really respect and appreciate their work. I did get a voicemail from Mr. Reardon the other night. They were talking about moving the elections, and I've been talking about, we need to move the elections, and we need to have runoffs in the city of Clearwater. A city this size, I think we're probably the biggest city around that does not have an election runoff. And I was told that the last time this came up, that it was brought up that this was targeting certain people. It's not targeting anybody. As a matter of fact, everyone here, the four of us, except for you, would all have runoffs in our first elections. I got forty-one percent, and I was the little guy at the time. Nobody knew me. I never ran for office. I got forty-one percent against the sitting mayor and a sitting council member. And my feeling is, if I couldn't have picked up that next nine and a half to ten percent, I didn't deserve to be up here. That's just the way the system was and is. But I think in a city like Clearwater, we move the elections and we do it in conjunction. And I've talked to supervisor elections, Julie Marcus and some of her people, and I think we can get more information. They said if we do them in conjunction in August and November, when there are either county, state, and city elections like St. Petersburg at the same time, we'll save a lot of money and we'll get a much larger turnout. And the election would be in August. If there is fifty percent of the vote, that person's elected. If there's not fifty percent of the vote, then the runoff is in November, in conjunction years. So I just feel this is something that is about time we did in a city this size. I think it's overdue, and I think if we're going to change the elections, this is something that goes hand in hand with that. And we would put it on a ballot in next March. If it was passed by the citizens, they'll have the right to say yes or no, which for something like this, I think they deserve that right, and I don't know why anybody would argue against it to give them the right. This wouldn't happen until August of twenty-six, which is three years from now. It wouldn't affect anybody in their current seats, except for maybe you on your second term. You two would get an additional five months in your office before the election, before it expired. Ken Welsh got an additional year when St. Petersburg did it. And I just think it's, it's time to do it. And I think we'll talk about it, and then if we agree, we draw up a question, put it on the ballot next March nineteenth, and let the citizens decide if it's something they want to do or if not, but they do not want to do it. So I'd be interested in comments and hearing what everybody had to say. Anyway.
So I've, of course, you know, this is a big, big subject with a lot of various views, and of course, I've gotten a lot of feedback, very diverse as well. I acknowledge that there's, there's really pros and cons for and against. You know, as a candidate, sometimes I, I think, oh, my gosh, to prolong that process. But I shouldn't be talking as a candidate. I should be talking as a private citizen. So even though there's, you know, pros and cons, the bottom, at the end of the day, I think this should be a decision by the voters. I understand that the process is going to be prolonged. I understand that it's going to be probably more expensive, but it isn't even playing field. All the candidates will have the same challenges and just have to budget accordingly. But as a private citizen, I have to agree with those who have called me and said, I need the confidence of having my leaders have a clear majority. And I, and I can't argue that. And I, I think it's important enough that the voters need to decide. Now, I, I have some interesting takes on an aspect of it, but I don't think it's, I think it's a bit too complicated. But for me, I would even go so far as fifty plus one or a point spread. So if there's, if it's a crowded field like four, you know, four candidates with like a five to ten or even fifteen percent spread, to me, that's a clear majority. However, I acknowledge that it's complicated, and so I'm not going to go there, but I just wanted to put it out there anyway. But after speaking with so many people with different opinions, it only solidified to me that we need to leave it to them to make, to make that decision.
Colonel?
David's good.
So I've been through the campaign three times, and I can tell you, when, before I decided I was going to run, Clearwater's kind of a sleepy town. There were candidates, and we even had a mayor that just kind of walked in because he didn't have anybody to run against him. But now, it seems like things are happening in Clearwater, and we're really seeing interest by the people to get involved and to have a say in city government, and that's great. It's only when we have four and five people running that it's really hard to get a majority, you know, because it splits it up so much. So I think we're, it's time, and like you were saying, Mayor, I think it's time for Clearwater to go to a runoff, because I think we're going to see a continued interest in this, and wouldn't just a little spike. I think we're gonna, now we're gonna start seeing people running. Every year, we're gonna have three or four people, maybe five in each, you know, position. So I think it's a good thing.
That's the rumor. Yes, ma'am.
So I have concerns about what is the end goal and, you know, why we're proposing this. So I would ask, if you think it's time for the city, we have a large enough city that we deserve a runoff, are there any cities that have runoffs that don't have districts that are full citywide elections? Because St. Pete's not. Tampa's not. You know, and so I, I would, I would ask that we understand that better. If we're going to have a runoff, it is incredibly expensive to run. It's over, last election, it was over seventy thousand dollars to run a campaign. And, you know, and this election's going to be even more. People have voted for a raise, a sixty-seven percent raise, because we wanted to attract more diverse candidates on the council. Well, if we want more diverse candidates, having them run twice is not going to increase the diversity on the council. You're going to have to have a quick turnaround to run another election if you don't get fifty percent to have a runoff campaign. And when you run a campaign in November versus March or August and November, it's more expensive to run in the fall. You have, all the campaign vendors are dealing with other candidates, whether they're national, state, county, municipal. It's more expensive to do mailings, to have that kind of promotion, to run a campaign in the fall. There's also ballot fatigue a lot more in the fall. You have more things on the ballot. And so, you know, I just, I just wonder if, if what we really want is to open up our dais to people of more diverse incomes and backgrounds, having them run a citywide race twice with a runoff during a, an expensive time of the year to run is not going to increase diversity up here.
So here's my comment to that. If you're running and you're going to be a popular candidate, you're going to be backed by people that want you to be in this position. You're not putting your own money into it. So I don't care if you're white, black, green. If you're somebody that has put time in and are recognized as a good candidate for the city, the citizens of Clearwater will back you for that position. If you're a nobody and you don't know anybody and you're coming into a race, you probably aren't going to be a successful candidate. But it's not a matter to me of cost, because really, candidates that are successful candidates are going to be backed by, you know, people that want to see them get into that position. And there'll be people on both sides of it that are going to be putting money in. So, you know, it's not just one person. you know, it's not just one person.
But they can do that in the, in the spring as well, and doing it only once is a lot different than doing it twice. And I, I just, I think the top of the line concern is, if you want to have runoffs, you need to really look at districts. Because I challenge you to have a city of this size or larger that doesn't have districts and has runoffs. They go together.
Well, you mentioned St. Pete and Tampa, and both of those are strong mayor cities.
Yes, that's nice.
And we're not, so...
No, but we have to cover, you know, one hundred and seventeen thousand residents in a very diverse and large city to get elected, and, um, you know, we need to look at, at districts if we're going to be looking at runoffs.
Can I, can I respond?
Sure.
So first of all, when I was talking, when I was talking about increasing our salaries from twenty-seven thousand to forty-five, because I want to clarify that, because sixty-six is so shocking. Sixty-six percent is so shocking, everybody likes to use that, but it's forty-five. I did it for diversity, because once the person is elected, they have to live off of it. So unless we want to give affordable housing to our own council, that's why I did it, that's diversity. But it has been proven over and over again, and here included, that there is no direct correlation between fundraising and winning. We have some that have raised the most and who have won, and some who have raised the least that have won. When I think of diversity, I don't believe that runoffs will affect it, and I'll tell you why. Because the candidate who has worked hard in the community will be supported, and they're financially supported by the fundraising, not by their own personal funding. That's the even playing field. So if someone who is very active in the community and is a community leader who's not affluent, who wants to run, they will have the support they need, that's number one. Number two, again, there's no correlation between fundraising and winning, it is one of many things that are needed in, in, in the formula. And I remember when we were talking about the raise, you were talking about that you weren't willing to do it without it being, what was the terminology you used? You want a sort of like a holistic approach. It's nice to say that, but I don't think it's feasible to do it holistically, we have to do it one thing at a time. And I don't think that districts have anything to do with runoffs. Because I don't think districts will guarantee diversity. If we, if we look at the way the city is done, the way the city is laid out and spread out, and the different communities, it will be so impossible to carve out those districts so that we encourage diversity. And then we're going to create a, a, a government or a government body where one of us only wants, only has special interests of a small group, and then he would be countryside, I'd be downtown, he would be the beach. And so you're creating, because of human, you know, human nature, you're creating discourse because you're only representing a small amount, and then everybody has to vote for you, but you're only representing a small amount. It's just, I don't think that's, I think it's two separate things. And diversity for the city council is one thing that I think is important, but it's not the only thing. I think confidence from the citizens are important too. And if we have lack of confidence from the citizens, because they feel that their leaders are not represented in their, in the way that they feel they should be, then, then, then we have lack of confidence. So I understand both arguments, like I said, and I, and that's one of the reasons why I think the voters should, should, should decide this.
Okay.
I just, you know, I think we need to encourage voters to engage at all times. I won my race with four in our race at like forty-eight, forty-nine, high forties percent. I did not spend the most either, but I spent a whole bunch. I mean, it, it took a lot, mailings take a lot, and I didn't mail as much as others. And, you know, you go out and you work hard and the best candidate can win, and, and they can win in March. They don't, you know, we don't need to have runoffs, voters speak. I think we need to encourage voters to, you know, show up and vote, and we need to do that all the time, not just during elections. And when we welcome voters and residents to engage in public meetings, whether they're strategic planning, or CRA, or comp plan, or anything, I mean, that, that allows, you know, that what that does is helps build a base of people who will show up and vote. We need to do our job as well, to welcome our voters, to participate and feel like their voice matters.
I would love to see that, but I've been, I've been frustrated, you know, like you, I've knocked on doors, sixty-seven hundred was the last one, and I would say the majority did not know who Frank Hibbert was, their mayor, the majority of them. And then when we do go out to the community, how many times has staff outnumbered the actual people who have attended? It's an uphill battle to get, to get engagement. And so if, by changing the months, we can get more involvement, why not try it? And again, I, I, I feel that this is important enough that the citizens have to decide.
But I don't think changing the months gets more engagement. I mean...
It gets more voters, it's proven. I mean, I, I have an email here from the supervisor of elections saying there's a city in Pinellas County, a two-hundred-and-seventy-nine percent increase in turnout. I mean, that's incredible, and I, that's what we want. Right? I mean, is that what we want?
Well, there's also, you know, ballot fatigue and engagement and, you know, messages getting lost in national, state, whatever campaigns.
I just, I just think, I mean, I've talked about ballot fatigue with people too, and they say that the people that want to vote in the city of Clearwater are going to vote all the way down the ballot. And there's going to be some people that are going to maybe just vote for the governor and they'll go home. But the majority, you're going to see still a much bigger turnout and a much bigger vote count, even if you quote unquote have ballot fatigue, and there's people that tell me that's just not, it's not a high percentage of the voters. There's a few. But, and I just think, as Councilmember Tishar said, that let the citizens decide. It's not up for me to decide, it's not up for anybody up here to decide individually, let the citizens decide if it's time for the city of Clearwater to have their elections and have a runoff, so that the, and what happens, and if you talk to anybody who's been through this, yeah, there's four or five people, the top two people, they, they have their agenda and they have their platform, and the people that voted for the other people and supported them financially, then they'll start supporting the other people in the runoff because they want one of those two people, they're more aligned with the person that they supported. So fundraising's not going to be that big of an issue. And I just don't, I don't, I don't believe it, and I, in, anyway, as Councilmember Tishar said again, it's people that raised the least amount of money that won, the people that raised the most that won. So it's, it's not the only thing, it's grassroots, as you well know, as you well know, it's going out knocking on doors, getting out in front of people, going to all the different forums, getting your name out, and, I don't know. I just think it's time for a city this size to let the voters decide if they want this.
I would say you need to pair it with some kind of question about districts or something.
I do not support, I do not support districts in the city of Clearwater.
Look at it in isolation is not fair.
I just don't think it, like, I just don't think it works here. And I'll leave it at that, I'm not going to go any further on that, but that's my opinion, that's just my opinion. I, I respect your opinion, but, um, so what do we do with this now? Do we have to bring this back, or do we give?
So there's a, there's a...
Go ahead.
So, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to handle this. So it's a complex topic, because we have more than one moving part to this, right? I mean, there's the creation of runoffs, there's moving election dates, you know, there's the separate question of districts, there's a lot that goes into this. So if there is direction from a majority of council, and it sounds like there is, and I recognize Vice Mayor's not here today, but it sounds like I'm hearing from at least a three-member majority, that there is a desire to create a ballot question for voters, which would appear in the March twenty-twenty-four ballot, asking voters if they want to create a runoff system in Clearwater. Is that a correct summary? And I see three nods. So if that is the direction from the majority, then I'll probably do two things procedurally. Number one, I'll start working on a ballot question to prove something like that. That will come back to council as a proposed ordinance, we'll probably bring that in October, we'll look at the dates, I don't think we'll make the September one, that's okay, but we'll bring that in October. Council will have opportunities both through one-on-one discussion as well as through public discussion to shape what that looks like. So that's the half of it, is creating the runoffs. The other half of it is moving our dates of elections. We can move the dates of elections by ordinance, moving the dates of elections does not require a referendum question, it's kind of an unusual example, it's really one of the only charter type amendments that does not require referendum, it's kind of an outlier, but there's a special statute that deals with moving elections. So what I would likely do is draft an ordinance for council's consideration, which, if passed by council, would say that starting in the year twenty-twenty-six, our elections are moved to August of even numbered years in conjunction with state and federal primaries, and if there is a runoff, it will be held in November of even numbered years in conjunction with the general election ballot. However, that ordinance would say that it does not go into effect at all, or even in part, unless and until voters in March of twenty-twenty-four approve the runoff system. In other words, we are tethering them together, because I understand that to be the desire of the majority of council. So it would be two things coming to you, one will be the ordinance, which would be conditionally changing our dates of elections, starting in twenty-twenty-six, but only if voters approve the ballot question, creating runoff system for March of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four. So if that is the council's general direction, then that's enough for at least me to get started on shaping that, and then bring that to council for review and further refinement over the next month or two.
And just to be clear, the supervisor of elections said we have to move it, because they couldn't do another time during the year at our discretion. It would have to be coinciding with all the other elections in that process, right?
My, I have not personally spoken with the supervisor, but my understanding from the clerk and the mayor is that that is the supervisor's perspective, but I don't want to speak out of turn, because the clerk and the mayor have those conversations.
So if we co, if we coincide with our countywide elections, then the cost is a lot easier, obviously, because it's, we're now cost sharing if it's countywide, but that is what they, what she has basically expressed, that she will support that move if we go from an August to November election schedule.
Okay. And she told me that even if we have a runoff, we'll still save money over just a single election in March as a city. So that part will still cost us.
No, if, runoff if we go August, November?
Yes, yeah.
If it's March, you're still...
No, we can't do it in March, yeah, no, I'm talking about if we move it.
You just said March, so that's why, I just want to clarify that it's August, November.
No, well, what I meant was instead of us having an election, just a standalone election in March, we'll still save money with a runoff and a election as a city. Okay, any further comments? Anyone else? Okay, all right. Next item, Councilmember Beckman, you have Tampa Bay Estuary Program update?
Yes, I do, and I handed out the economic valuation of Tampa Bay from Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council and the Tampa Bay Estuary Program Board, so it has all sorts of information about the industries and financials related to the value of Tampa Bay. We've got huge numbers, there's thirty-two-point-one billion dollars in total annual input, three-point-two million, billion dollars added regional property value, and one in ten jobs are attributed to our Tampa Bay, actually the bay. Courtney Campbell goes over at Hawes Way, and so we need to work hard to protect it. So you've got all of that information in that, in that brochure or the, or that document. We had our last quarterly meeting on August eighteenth, and so what we did with the Tampa Bay Regional, or the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, was we adopted our initial twenty-twenty-four budget, we approved a quarterly financial report, and we directed staff to revise and re-advertise the old Tampa Bay Assimilative Capacity Assessment Project, they wanted different responses about scientists who are going to study what's going on in the bay. We also directed the staff to prepare a letter to the city of Tampa, reiterating the program's continued commitment to reducing total nitrogen loading into Hillsborough Bay and Tampa Bay. And, you know, we're part of that nitrogen consortium here. We also received updates on the comprehensive conservation and management, the CCMP plan, an interim update, and then we received, I had requested this and others were interested in it as well, but we received a presentation on artificial turf. So there was a law student who did research from, a law student from Stetson Law, did research and produced a bunch of information on the environmental considerations for artificial turf ordinances and, and what that might include. And one of the things, you know, he presented was, they should include water use and permeability, heat retention, ecological function loss, and chemical contamination, because a lot of that artificial turf, even high, high, you know, high-quality artificial turf, and it could be, you know, I'd be interested in knowing what the chemical makeup of is artificial turf at Coachman Park, contain microplastics, VOC, VOCs and PFOS and other really harmful chemicals. So what we did was, we encouraged staff to support additional research evaluating the various trade-offs between native and Floridian-friendly landscaping, living turf grass and artificial turf, and we're going to set aside money next year to have a formal study. The bottom line is, I mean, think, you know, nobody was, they didn't make a formal recommendation other than, you know, it was kind of a red flag about, look at those chemicals that are associated with artificial turf. Granted, there are chemicals associated with fertilizers and pesticides that people put on their lawns, let alone mowing and carbon emissions and all that business. But in a perfect world, I think people would be okay with native landscaping, and it looks pretty scrubby in some times of the year, and you just have to get over that everything's not going to look like a golf course in your front yard. And really and truly, that's the best for our environment. But that was the, you know, information, there's more to come about, about, you know, a more formal recommendation about artificial turf. And also there's bay mini-grants available, things like rain gardens and, and improvements to water retention, they're due September fifteenth, and I've shared that information with some nonprofits in the area. So that's my information on Tampa Bay Estuary.
Okay, thank you, it's a nice, nice piece they put together here.
It's an easy read, it's not bad.
Yeah, 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 for slow readers like me, I appreciate that. Okay, good meeting today, and again, I do want to, once again, thank all of our staff. I, I also want to thank Barry Burton and the county, they did a tremendous job, they communicated with our people very well. I got a lot of communications from them, and it was a really good conjunctive effort. And, you know, we're prepared, hopefully, again, we don't have to use that anytime soon, but beginning of the storm season, we're, we're prepared, everyone did a great job. Okay, we'll see everybody tomorrow. Yes, ma'am.
We have sixteen new business for future meetings?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
Sixteen new business.
I have two requests.
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So in the future, I'd like to discuss some of the meetings I've had with Clearwater Alliance for Housing, I'd like that on, on the agenda.
Okay.
And as well as have a discussion on retail repurpose shipping containers within the CRA footprint.
Okay. Any other new business?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we should have, I'm hoping we can have a discussion soon about what are the ten dates the city is going to claim for the sound. So we're allowed ten dates where we can use that amphitheater per our contract, and as far as I know, we just have the Fourth of July claimed right now. And I'm thinking Ruth Eckard Hall's going to want to know what dates we want as their scheduling artist throughout the year. I'm wondering if we have five dates remaining for the rest of this year, because, you know, we had the grand opening at the end of June, we had the Fourth of July. I know we use that amphitheater more than just the Fourth of July, so we had Cheap Trick and things like that. But how many dates are left, and what are we going to use them for for twenty-twenty-three? And then what are we going to queue up for twenty-twenty-four? And I think, you know, I think it would be wise to have some community meetings and find out what residents would like to see down at the sound. You know, do we want to have an MLK celebration down there? Do we want Juneteenth down there? Do we want an event for National Hispanic Heritage Month down there? I have no idea, but I think it's important to really get citizen input about how they'd like to, to see that. Maybe we have, you know, we've had Neighborhoods Day, maybe we have a culmination event on that Sunday with, you know, a big event under the amphitheater covering, you know, that celebrates all the diversity in our neighborhoods or something. But I think that's, that's important, so a community forum, a poll, all that kind of thing. And then I also think, because there's, you know, we have thousands and thousands of residents... residents with Mexican heritage in Clearwater, who are very excited about our sister city agreement with Ex Machilpan, and I think it'd be important to have a community meeting or two to discuss what that really means. And is it going, you know, because my feeling is that people want it to be a little more than a cultural exchange with students, that, that they want to be engaged and help shape it more. So I think it's important to get out in front of that and have, have a meeting like that. And then the last thing I think I'd like to do at some point is, this really has to do with the budget, is at some point, I would like to have, because our city leadership is doing a great job with dashboards and transparency right now. But I think it would be good to have a dashboard that accounts for all of the expenditures that the city allocates for things that are not operational. So they don't have to do with operating the city. They're not salaries, you know, they're not procurement of, of hard costs, but it's anything that's discretionary or partnerships with outside organizations. I think we need to have a real eagle-eye view of that, what that is, and, and so that we can champion what we're doing, we can celebrate what we're doing and where that money is going. And I think it's really good to have some line items, you know, on a, on a balance sheet that shows us where that money goes and how much it is. So I'd like to talk about that possibility as well.
Okay. Anything else on new business? Okay. Again, thank you, everybody, for a great job. We'll see you tomorrow night for the budget meeting. Good luck.